Does have access to some federal lands through the Federal Lands Bill. However, it's really important to understand how that works. So, in order for the city to gain access to use those federal parcels, there are several steps. The first step is that we have to approach the Bureau of Land Management and request for our parcel to be used and identified under the Recreation and Public Purpose Act for a specific use. So, in order to do that, we have to first apply to the O L M and then we have to go through a paid process, which takes about a couple of years to go through that process. If we were successful, that designated a specific parcel for that purpose. And then the city wanted to exchange it for another parcel. Because the city doesn't, at that point, own the property, we basically have the ability to use it for a park. So, we would then have to go to the O L M and say, "Okay, we want to swap parcels." And then they would have to approve that. Or, in the alternative, we could get, we could purchase that property from the federal government and get the reversion of rights or actually own that parcel. In order to do that, we would have to pay fair market value and then be able to do a land swap. So, that is the process of doing, using the Federal Lands Bill in order to use it for that purpose and swap the property. The other alternative without going through that process would be that the city would outright purchase that land and then potentially enter it to a lease for use as a motocross track. There are still a couple of issues with that. One is because not budgeted funds for the purchase of that property, nor have there been any discussions with the owner, have the potential for doing that. So, I know it's frustrating and challenging. The council asked us to do some, to provide some information about options. So, that's what we have in front of you. So, with that, I will ask questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
What is the asking price for that property?
Sir, I don't know. I didn't look into that. Like I said, we haven't talked with the owner. I wanted to get a direction from the council before we took any steps.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, who is it?
I would like to ask that we figure out what the price of the land is and open up for more options. Maybe we have the money, maybe we know. But I know that, you know, that area for the track has been very, very problematic for the city, not so much owning it, but because of people that stay here and gas and the food and the course. And so, I would like to ask for, to get a price and see what they're willing to negotiate for and break that and look at it that way.
You'd have to make that in a motion.
I make a motion that the city looks into how much it would be to purchase the property at the Envy Street or around Old Cross. So, it becomes a park.
It's out of motion. You have a second. Alright, so the motion dies, so... Is there anything else to discuss? So, what I can gather and I apologize to you gentlemen, was a whole bunch of you to write a lot of stuff in these calls. I had numerous people sending emails. And I didn't mean to, I meant to do that and apparently I got some people's hopes up. I have a very interesting question. We have a land swap. The problem with the Lands Bill is, we're still waiting two and a half years to live and we still have not gotten paperwork that we started. So, to trade a piece of property, it's durable, but it's just, it would take years to get it done. The current system that we have with the O L M and the way that the Lands Bill reads. So, staff is telling us it's not feasible for us. And the owners want something done tomorrow. They're concerned. To be honest with you, I don't think we have any retirement money for what they want that piece of property, to be truthful. All best intentions in the world is going to make this happen, apparently. And I apologize to the riders and to the people who use that part of them. I myself have taken my grandkids out there and I've ridden out there myself. So, I apologize to them. I will allow some of you who want to come and make a statement, a brief statement. But if staff is to own a system, I don't think we're going to be able to do this. So, at the end of the day, you know, why somebody blame me? This is the system we have. And it's, we're doing our best again, so... With that, does anybody wish to make a statement? I'll take a couple of statements if somebody wants to. Go ahead and introduce yourself and state your name clearly, please.
I'm Danny Hart. I'm the vice president of the Motocross.
Hang on.
I'm Danny Hart. I own and operate N B Racing News. I've been covering events out at the Sandbox for well over 20 years now. Parents that I saw with little kids, now their little kids are out there. And you were correct, Mr. Mayor, in saying that it does bring an economic benefit. People buying gas, people buying food, some people staying. And I only wish that there was a way that you could maybe hold this off and see if you can work around this and get it. Also, another incident we had a few years ago, the Lions lost all of their turkey dinners due to a freezer failure. One of the clubs went out and replaced every single one of those turkeys at no charge. So, they were able to help. And as far as the land goes, the track preparations, our regular track preparation is done by the clubs. And the water that they need, you know, the new water system, they bring in by the truckload and they actually pay the city for the water. So, I think the economic rewards are pretty great and all I can do is hope that there's somebody who can work through this.
Anybody else who should speak? Then, gentlemen, get up, walk up. All of you get up and line up if you want to speak.
Hello, my name is Danny Hart. I'm the president of the Motocross. I would like to say that if we can do anything to try to get any piece of property that's in the city of Birmingham, we would love to stay in the city of Birmingham to try to keep O T issue going and bring the money to the community. Like Danny said, we do pay for our own water, we do rent all the equipment, we can do supply turkeys for the Lions Club to help the community. We've also done food drives, we've also done glasses before the community. We've done jerseys for the football team. We've done a lot for this community. We don't get paid anything. We don't, this is a nonprofit organization. So, all the money that we do make goes back to the community and back to, you know, the track and so on and so forth. Everything that we bought from fencing to track correction, everything has come from the city of Birmingham. We have not outsourced anything, we tried to create because we can't get that from the city of Birmingham. There's nobody to tell me where it's coming from. But that being said, that we, everything that we do is in the city of Birmingham. We donate, we help, we do everything we can. I just ask that if we can push this off to try to get another piece of property that nobody knows about or something like that, to try to keep motocross alive in the city of Birmingham.
Okay, thank you.
Yes? My name is Steve Murrow. And I'm not going to talk about money, I'm just going to talk about mental health. Excuse me, mental health and the children and the people involved with this. I know we're all talking about money and this and that and the other, but with everything going on in the past couple of years and what we're going through now, I think it's just a mental health issue, not all kids or bad for all kids. And this gives kids an outlet and families an outlet to do something. So, I know we're all about the mighty dollar in this world, but let's not forget about our mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Tony Vazza. I'm the president of the Battle World Motocross. We're the sanction body for motocross races in Northern Nevada. And I'm also a O T H D and Motet Max member, racer and father of two boys who race. And first, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your sincere words there. And I could tell they were heartfelt on the challenges that we have at the track. But if there was any way, like for the board, a whole lot of citizens, if there's any way to either figure out a way to work for property or another piece of property, our membership of Battle World Motocross is around four, four riders a year. We draw riders from as far as Oregon, Southern California, Idaho that come to our races. They come to our races, they come to Birmingham, they support the community with restaurants, hotel rooms, gas, plenty of other things in town. The track does hold a certain place in my heart. I raced there when I was a little boy, nine and five. It just, for the longevity of the clubs that have been promoting there. When I raced there, it was for Reno, O T H D and the Battle Motet Max. So, these are, as you know, these are clubs that have been around for a long time. They really know what they're doing. If there was a land swap possible, the, some concerns that I saw in the last meeting from the board are concerns that can be handled by the promoters. For example, equipment rental comes through them, insurance comes through them. The clubs would also be able to get grant funding through all of the funds to bring up the property, fence it off and create a, create a park to stay here. But it's been, Birmingham's definitely been a staple of the motocross community for a long time, at least throughout my lifetime. And it's really unfortunate that it's really the last one in Northern Nevada. I've seen way too many tracks go away. And, Mr. Mayor, or if we could, or the council, if we could find a way to build this off and maybe see if there's other options or, as Danny said, another piece of property that we would be able to talk right on, it would be, it would be really amazing for the riding community. Thank you.
I'm Robert Reed. This is Robert Reed, Motocross Club, current active president. You know, I don't know if the city council members are involved in, involved with the property of this motocross, you know, as far as what we have here. I know that money has been an issue for some of you as far as, you know, having the money to put it in another park or recreation area here in the city. But, you know, I've seen races happen at this motocross track and I see the difference between this motocross track and one of them, it's too big. A BMX track is for bikes, you know. And I'm glad, I don't know if any of the new city council persons were here when that piece of property that the city had was able to hand over to the BMX and they were able to acquire it to use it for their races and whatnot. I would hate to see that this track get torn down. The Lions Club served for many years. The Lions Club's been here in Birmingham since the seventies. The Lions Club have been there with volunteers to serve food for the racers and be there to support them and make sure they have food to eat. Recently, our cook shack was stolen off the property. And now, we don't have a cook shack. So, you know, we'd hate to see this go away. I did ask, I was asked by the property owner if the city would consider the fact that we can put a lease agreement with the property owners and see if there's any way at all we can save this track. So, I'm here, a father of nine children, who love to go see these races. I am here to ask that you please consider looking into other avenues to try to save this track for our city and for those kids and the students, especially those who may not be supporting this in the first place. Thank you.
So, I don't think anybody is against keeping a track here in the city. Nobody on this council is against keeping a track here in the city. However, as you know, the process to go through and go through the Lands Bill to get that certain piece of property is a long extensive project. We don't have the money, I know, because we're getting ready to do budgets, to just outright purchase the property. So, I think as far as the rules of the Corum Bill, the decision to either approve us working on this piece of property or not is what is on the table at the time. So, there has to be a decision that, that we can't just table for later on the hopes that another piece of property goes in front of us. I don't think anybody up here or in staff, or I'm sorry, or on staff is against somebody coming to us, your guys' group, owners of another piece of property and doing another pull. We're not saying that a lot of that can be addressed. But for us to pick up this property, I can only estimate what it's going to cost, depending on our budget. And if we were to start the Lands Bill, probably wouldn't be able to even use it until that was done. So, you're looking at how you temporarily can continue to use that for the next several years until the Lands Bill is done. So, just a bit of an explanation for your guys' group. My right, I understand, it is an important piece of property in the town. I, I wish it. The seller was here, maybe it was a different avenue? Or, maybe you guys' group approved the seller and give it a reduced rate and we'd be able to work with it? Just a few ideas.
Anybody else have any comments? I'll take a couple more of them.
Hello, my name is Anthony Ferran. This is a Motocross community member. I was originally part of thinking the BMX track bill, starting these guys. My question is, is if we could lease the property from the owner right now, will the city lease the property? And can we get parks grants to fence it, today it's still leasing? Can that, is that something that you work on? So, the track doesn't go away? We got parks grants for the BMX stuff and that was able to build the whole track, make sure the fencing was good and it still operates today.
The BMX track we own, it's already pretty much announced. We did some repairs, which was pretty simple for us. It was a low hanging fruit, that's what they call it. And that wasn't my gamble, was it? I knew that it was low.
Mr. Harris, you can't use the tie during the commentary, so I'll start back and forth.
Alright, so the option to secretly lease the land, to secretly lease the land, and can't get parks grants to be able to fence it, then it doesn't seem liable. And then the insurance is carried from motocross tracks out there from the permanent, permanent traffic intersection.
Alright, this will be the last one. I'm pretty sure everybody feels the same way. And I know how I feel.
Hello, my name is Tyler Delarmo. I've been a part of the motocross community my entire life. I've helped out at the Sandbox for long races since I was 12, helping the equipment. I think the city apparently should look into what they need to do to lease it or whatever, because this is a staple in this community in Northern Nevada. I was talking to people today at my job in Reno, to people who have nothing to do with the motocross community, that all knew about the track. They all talked to me about how they came out and had their experiences. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight because I live in Looning. I commute three hours in Reno every day and rush to get here. I think that the city of Birmingham were to lose this track, it would be devastating to the community in Northern Nevada. My dad is buried at the Bedford Cemetery. Not only because he was a veteran, but because it was located right next to the track, the place he spent his entire life helping put on races and making the community stronger than that. I know, right now, there's been issues with people going out, coming onto the track to go do stupid stuff in the parking lot. These two clubs that I've been around and have now been able to be a part of, that I know about, have shown and helped the community out that they can get done what needs to be done. We just haven't really had a chance at buying the property to make the improvements we'd like to do. The Sandbox is a unique track across the country. If you were to look and Google it, I think I can name off the number of well-known sand tracks. On one hand, there's one on the east coast called Southwick. That's a major national track and that's really about it. If we lose the Sandbox, we're losing something unique in the country, if not the world. There's not a whole lot of motocross tracks. I had a paper written on it that time, printed out. I'm just, I'm here with you guys, but please try to find solutions that we can keep a track that's been around since the late, mid seventies. I'm at a loss for words. I, I never, in my entire time of being a part of this community, thought this was going to ever become a possibility. I knew in the future we might have to work with you guys to try to figure out what to do, but to have it happen this way, where someone came in who was just worried about making money and now we're going to lose it, breaks my heart. These clubs have done so much for this community. We, we want to get back. All we want to do is make everything better for people. I'm not sure what else is that they do.
Hi, thank you, sir. I'll take them all away.
Chad, can you hear me? Chad, can you hear me yourself? Chad? Can you hear yourself? Has anyone else, is there anyone else? Can you hear me?
Anybody else? Anybody else? Alright.
Chad? Chad, can you, can you hear me? Chad, can you hear me through northern speakers?
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Geez, look, wait, so sorry. Hey, my name is Chad Johnson and I'm currently the vice president of the Motet Max Nevada Club. Fairly new to the whole motocross scene, just been involved maybe, maybe five or six years now. Over the years, just had such wonderful experiences out there at the Sandbox and, you know, got to know all these people that you heard from tonight who have been out there for, for generations. And it is truly an iconic track. Matter of fact, our club draws in riders once a year from 11 different full timers chapters throughout the west coast, including all the way down to Southern California, Montana, British Columbia, Alberta, Canada. And the uniqueness of the, of the city and the track is absolutely phenomenal. Like the title of the last story that spoke was talking about, people come from a long, long ways away to experience this track. Not just, not to mention all the local races that are put on there. Just as last year was attracting maybe four to five hundred riders per event. So, gosh, we really appreciate everybody that's been involved over the years, the Lions Club, the city of Birmingham, all the help and support from all the families and, and all the people that have put the effort and effort into making motocross happen for all these decades. It's just, it's just phenomenal. So, thanks to everybody for everything they have done. And if there's anything that can open this, this guy's not again somewhere down the road. I know the families that are present today and the clubs will not give up on trying to recreate and come back to the city council at some point with perhaps similar options that we can all get. So, anyways, thank you all very much.
Anybody else? That's it? Okay. Talk towards. I'm moving to deny the purchase of the property for the motocross track.
Officer.
Yeah, a motion to direct staff. I think what I'm looking for is a direct staff to cease and assist trying to find a way to... But you want to just say a motion to not purchase it, to break that law?
Well, the only thing on the table from what I understand and reading staff report is whether or not to purchase or not purchase the motocross track. You know, we don't have the, you know, the Lands Bill on the table. That's why I'm in an estimation with these gentleman ladies. And not saying, because we don't know what further information is going to come before us and we don't know what these groups are going to bring before us or ideas. So, tonight is only based upon the staff reports and what is on the table as far as staff report. And it is to deny or not deny the purchase. So, I'm moving to deny the purchase of the property for the motocross track, which is the only thing on the table right now.
Motion to deny staff to purchase the property. Maybe a council, to write a second by Councilman McKay. Maybe a council, to write a second by Councilwoman K. Any other comments? Alright, is, go ahead and call for the motion to move. Councilwoman K, are you voting?
Aye.
Is everybody voting? Okay, so that's right, we show, asks for one. So, I will ask this question. Does the council have any problem with you come up with a different alternative?
I think that has to be addressed to the future geniuses.
Okay, I'll ask for a future geniuses. Are you going to take a ten-minute recess?